All right, it's Monday, July twenty eight, twenty twenty five, regular session of the Board of Supervisors. The first item on the agenda is the agenda itself in the minutes from July twenty one.
I hope to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and second to approve as presented. Anything else there? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We should pass. Any public comment? And we'll go on to new business. Mr. Auditor.
Yeah, claims are prepared in front of you, sir.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and second to approve claims as presented. Any further comment there? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Should passes payroll?
No payroll today, sir.
Uh drainage.
That one drainage problem reported in Drainage District fifty eight, this actually came from the Air Department. Uh appears to be a sinkhole for a broken tile. Recommend that the wash might be assigned to investigation.
I move to have the washman investigate.
Second.
Motion and second to uh have the washman inspect that drainage sixty situation. Any further comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Next up, Adam.
I'll defer to Sandy Shoffler for the drainage through fifty seven.
And this is the final pay request for Larson Contracting. We need board approval for the pay request and Heather will make arrangements to make sure that the contractor has paid this last amount of three thousand plus um within thirty days of the public hearing. If that payment gets made timely, we just need approval of the pay request.
Move to approve the final pay request. Larson contract.
Like motion and a second to approve the uh final pay request is presented. Any further comment? All in favor? Aye. Now we're gonna drop down to item number seven um. Take care of this one, Michelle. Public health, our affiliate. The resolution appointed to certified petition.
You should have this resolution before you. It's for our latest grant. Um it began May fifteenth and goes through November uh twenty twenty eight for twenty twenty four six, no idea. So this is serving uh people within the county. Uh who are sixty two years or older or those who live with disabilities and some families with children uh younger than age six.
Tom. I move to approve resolution for about fifty five fifty one.
Officer, sir.
Fifty one.
We have a motion and second to approve resolution fifty one. Any further comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Or this passes, the resolution passes, sorry. Um item number eight is the resolution to designate voting reps for the Iowa State Association of Counties. Adam, you wanna comment on that?
Yeah, this is something new that came from the Iowa State Association of Counties. It's a formal request that each county formally designate who their voting representatives are. Essentially, it's that elected official or uh appointed official or department head for each of their affiliates. So they just requested this be done formally through resolution and forwarded on to them.
Move resolution for fifty two as presented.
Second.
Motion and second to approve resolution fifty two as presented. Any further comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um.
You can do ten oh five at that.
Yeah, I was gonna say, let's go back to item number five of ten oh five uh uh and uh open the public hearing for the change of zone for Watt. Tom, you wanna give us some background there?
Yes, this is an application by Lyle and Nancy Watt to Rockville, Iowa. They wanna separate their homestead from their farmland. They're gonna sell the farmland. He's the homestead. It's about four point four seven acres, so they should resell that from A one to A two. Look at the size. Uh we've not seen any correspondence from any neighbors. Request is a general compliance with the comprehensive plan. Building has taken out of farm production, so we would recommend approval.
Anybody care to just re-comment us? I'm gonna talk to him.
And I'd make a motion to close this portion of the public hearing.
Second.
Motion and second to close public board's hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. When we need to rip.
I think resolution, resolution fifty three.
I'll second that.
Motion and second to approve uh resolution number fifty three for Watt. Uh any further comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Brandon.
Yes. Good morning. I wasn't ready for you. Uh.
Thinking about that tractor.
Yeah, yeah. You came with the mortgage. So I thought I'd give you an update. We worked with uh the troopers and the deputies and us to help close all the roads that were not closed, but man all the roads that were crossing the red brown route just to help traffic understand that they're gonna have to wait a little bit longer. In some points, we asked some of the uh center riding areas to hold for a second to allow some solar traffic across. So working together with everybody, we didn't have any incidents that we were made aware of, I guess, in in our route, so we really smooth it on the red brown route. I know we were just passed through, but you always worry about issues. But yeah, it all worked out well. The reason we had to help is the troopers didn't want to man them all and the deputies didn't have enough people that would volunteer for overtime. So we helped on three different crossings just to make sure that everybody was safe and it all worked out really well. Um last night and this morning, we're dealing with at least twelve trees down in roads that we've found so far. So lots of trees are down all over the county, mostly towards the north at this point. But I'm gonna tell you, that's gonna be most of the day today is, you know, chopped up and hold off just to get them out of the way. Yeah. And I didn't realize anything happened last night until I got to work and performing the road busy chasing trees. So our loaders and our crews are all taking care of those.
Any uh damage from the trees falling?
Not yet. It's just messes, as mostly is. Some, some places looks like people drove over top of the tree to get through. I mean, not big trees, but you can tell somebody drove through the tree to get through there, so.
No question.
Black car. I did. No, but yeah, that's why we're trying to get them out of there, because we don't know if those people chose to drive over that tree or if they were distracted and just drove to the tree for no choice. By the time they realize they were there, so. We're trying to get at least drug off the road to start with and then we chop them up and haul them off. Uh last week, we did have several washouts. We didn't have a ton of rain, but the the water coming down on us from up north uh didn't cross the road in a few places, so we were dealt with fixing that though. This week, we're gonna make sure we get all the dust control spots ready for the second application, so you guys will be running around doing that. Whatever gravel we have to do to make sure those are ready. I guess, sure of that. You guys have any questions for me?
Um just following up on the uh blind that you're building out by the west shop. Uh that gets.
Oh yeah, yep. The trees should be, I believe we put, they're a lot smaller, obviously, but they should all be out there. We got a a great deal on them, so. A little bit smaller.
So to say, so.
Yeah, they should all be planted. And that's not just by the west shop, those in Thornton and Ventura as well.
Well, any more on that? Going away?
No.
You gonna do anymore there?
Oh yeah, we have, we got the, I just got the report back Friday about having the uh I don't know, the hazardous materials uh estimate done. And so now I'm getting estimates from people that it's only, there's only like paint around the windows, like the in the actual window frames themselves. I think it'll be a pretty simple remediation to get the building ready for demolition.
Yeah.
The next step after that is we'll contact the city and get whatever correct permits are and then go on the list of contractors that are approved by the city for demolition. And then get bids from them as to how much it would cost. It's not just demoing the building, they also have to excavate and cap off the underground utilities, you know, the gas line, the water line, sewer line. Just to make sure those are properly dealt with so they don't cause damage to the city facilities. But I think we're gonna leave, I actually, I'm pretty certain we're gonna leave the cement pad, the floor that's in the whole building, we'll leave that. And we'll just pour all the floor drain solid and use it either as I I've been talking with Mitch and we've kind of been debating on whether it's even worth stockpiling a whole bunch of gravel in there if we just wanna keep using it for more dirt stockpiling and that kind of materials that we use for when we have washouts and that kind of problem. Instead of like when we do a a new whole storage out there, we might just put it exactly on the spot that old building was. This already has a pretty stable base and a floor that we can reuse instead of having to pour more concrete. So you might just utilize that as the floor for their cold storage building.
All right, um at this time, uh we'll open the public hearing for the change of zones for Rendover and Seymour. And you guys got that?
Yes, the request by um Steve Percy Seamers on behalf of Rosnauer. Basically, uh Rosnauers are farmers. They have a parcel with a shadow of this. Seamers has been leasing for about eighteen twenty three years. They're going to put a two acre parcel and sell it to to Steve and Tracy, who would need to rezone from A one to A two ag because of the size of the park. Uh we've not received any comments from neighbors. Yeah, this one request is a compliance with the comprehensive plan. It's an existing site, no ag land to be taken out of production. The extra acre or a half that that company needs or continue to lease into the farmer, it's probably be enjoying farmland. So recommend.
Anybody care to speak to this? One, five. Dean's not.
That was the first public hearing.
Second. And motion and second to close the public hearing. That is number six. Sorry for the comments. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh we're looking for resolution number fifty four.
I'll move resolution number fifty four to approve.
Motion and second to approve resolution fifty four. Any further comment there? All in favor? Aye. Aye. Um one more, Brandon, did you have anything else?
Oh, I have.
And uh I know you were working with Mark to third round. Wrapped up or?
Yeah, we got them all the gravel that we agreed to send out there. I mean, just like always, there's always more than yeah, there was a lot more than we can provide at this time, but it's this was, it worked really well during the fair out there, to be honest with you. They use those sites, so.
Is he gonna continue with the project through that drainage with all the wells and all that stuff?
I I am not sure. I haven't talked to him since the fair, to be honest with you.
All right, well we're gonna move on to item number ten, which is a closed session. Uh pursuant to Iowa Code Section twenty one point five one J to discuss a purchase for sale uh real estate only where the business closure has recently expected to increase the price, the government body would have to pay for the property to get the price of government paying the fees for that. And that means this is uh
I'm making a motion to go on the case of the the
second. Motion and second, Bob.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
We're back in regular session. Any correspondence, communication?
We'll adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn at 10:43. All in favor?
Aye.
Pierre?
Thank you.